Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Joe Williams is the interim chaplain at the Oklahoma Jail and Prison Ministry, and he's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman and Vice Mayor Meg Sayer if she'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Our gracious God, Heavenly Father, we come to praise you for who you are as the omniscient, omnipotent, sovereign, and omnipresent God. You are in this place. You arrived before any of us were here, and we thank you for that. We thank you for your presence. We come to thank you for the privilege of being in this wonderful city. Thank you for the leadership throughout the years, and especially these that are here today. Thank you, Father, for the way you have blessed us in so many, many ways. We are blessed in ways that many cities are not. And so, as we come here today to make petition to you that you will give direction to all that is said and done here, and according to Psalms 139, "You know us all by name, by thought, and you love us." And we thank you for that love that is expressed in so many, many ways. So we commit this time to you. Thank you for, again, for the privilege of being in this place today and being in this city. And I thank you for the leadership that we have that have been sovereignly placed in these positions by you, and it's all in your wonderful glorious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is Fire Prevention Month, and we asked several of our firefighters to come and help us with a proclamation today. I'll ask all of them to come up here and stand. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded to more than 69,000 calls for emergency assistance in 2013, and whereas during that same year, fire killed nine of our citizens, injured 67 others, and caused over $22 million in property loss. Whereas the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department are witness to the loss and devastation caused by fire firsthand, not only for those citizens who have lost loved ones or their homes and belongings to fire, but for their coworkers injured or killed in the line of duty. Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department is actively engaged in year-round public education programs to raise awareness of fire safety, to help prevent the frequency and severity of fires in our city. Now therefore, Mick Cornett, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to learn about fire prevention and fire safety and apply these practices at home, at work, and around our community.
Let's show our appreciation to our firefighters, those in the room and those at their stations today. And Chief, I'll allow you an opportunity to talk about the things that your people do.
Thank you, Mayor. And obviously, Fire Prevention Month is when we try and emphasize fire safety and our fire prevention message, but again, we want that to make sure that's ongoing throughout the year. So our public education staff that we have here today works very hard, and if, you know, we always hear about the tragedies sometimes on the news. I know a couple of weeks ago, there was actually a news story where there was a fire in a home, and they did report that the occupants got out safely because of a working smoke alarm. So that's a success. That's what we try and make sure that everybody is protected in their home, not only through their knowledge of how to be safe in their home, but to make sure that they have those measures in place to alert them in the event of a fire and get out safely. So as you hear about the tragedies sometimes, this staff right here, they're busy day in, day out, all year long, making sure that people have that knowledge, have that, those measures as far as a smoke alarm and other things. That's where the lives are being saved, but we don't hear about that because, again, it's not, it's not big news sometimes, and but we save more lives than people realize through these programs than we actually do through rescues and those things that seem to attract more attention. But I'll let Chief Kevin Berry, who's over our public education staff, just say a few words about some of the programs that they have.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. This month's theme is smoke alarms, and so we want everyone to make sure they have a working smoke alarm in their homes. It's one thing to have a smoke alarm, you need to make sure that alarm is working by testing it once a month. Another thing we want to emphasize is also exit drills in the home. We have a lot of practices at schools. We have evacuation plans that work, but most fires occur in the home, and most deadly fires occur in residences. So make sure you have an escape plan in your home for you, your loved ones, your children, or anyone that's living with you. And the last thing we want to emphasize is you need to have some sort of a plan. You need to always be sure that you know the seasons that we live in, you know the type of dangers that we face, the hazards that come about in Oklahoma, and be, have a plan for that. It should be no surprise for us when we get a weather warning, when we get a storm warning. We live in Oklahoma, so we need to make sure we keep a plan, have that plan active year round, and practice that with your family.
Well, thank you once again. I think having a plan is an excellent idea. Being prepared, you know, emergencies don't occur when it's convenient for you. They just occur, and these guys are going to be there as soon as they can, but every plan that you can take and have that communicated to everyone inside your house can certainly save lives in the long run. And so I'm going to hand this proclamation to you, and let's join in thanking our firefighters. It is also White cane Safety Month, and Vicki Golightly and Linda Moore are here. So Vicki, you want to step up with us? And Linda? And we have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the white cane is used by hundreds of Oklahoma City residents who are legally blind in order to navigate our city and access its public places, schools, and businesses. Whereas with proper training, people using the white cane can enjoy greater mobility and safety by determining the location of curbs, steps, uneven pavement, and other physical obstacles in their path. Whereas the white cane has opened the doors of opportunity to thousands of blind Oklahomans by enabling them to travel freely and independently in their communities. The white cane is now universally recognized as a symbol of blindness that improves the safety of blind pedestrians by alerting drivers when a visually impaired person is crossing a street, parking area, or other areas open to the public. Whereas Oklahoma law requires drivers to come to a full stop at least 15 feet away from a visually impaired pedestrian using a white cane or dog guide, and to take such precautions before proceeding as may be necessary to avoid accident or injury to the person who is wholly or partially blind. Whereas to honor the many achievements of blind and visually impaired citizens and to recognize the significance of the white cane in advancing independence, the United States Congress by joint resolution approved October 6, 1964, has designated October 15 of each year as White cane Safety Day. Now therefore, Mick Cornett, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim October 15, 2014, as White cane Safety Day in Oklahoma City, and urges all citizens to observe this day by recognizing the significance of the white cane, both as a symbol of independence and as a simple tool that enables Oklahoma City residents with visual disabilities to participate more fully in the social and economic life of our city and state.
Let's show our appreciation for White cane Safety Day. And Vicki, as we're building more and more sidewalks throughout the community, it really is allowing more people to take advantage of this opportunity.
It certainly is.
And I know there's people you'd like to thank.
Yes. Well, thank you, Mayor, and the city councilmen, all of you for being here today. This is, we think, the 11th annual White cane Safety Awareness Day, of course sanctioned by the President as the proclamation stated. We would like to invite anyone who is interested to join us October 15. We meet at 10, between 10:00 and 10:30, at the intersection of Oklahoma and Sheridan at Spaghetti Warehouse, where at that point at 10:30, DRS, Department of Rehabilitation Services Director Joe Cordova, who is blind himself and a cane user, will read the proclamation, and then we will begin our walk on a specific route. So Councilman Shadid is my councilman. I would like to personally challenge you to come join us and anyone else that would like to. Thank you so much for this opportunity to educate you about the importance of the white cane and dog guide users.
Thank you, Vicki. Let's show our appreciation again. I hope people can come out and join. Thank you, Vicki. And now it's an opportunity for us to honor our employee of the month. And you can imagine, in an organization that has over 4,000 employees, to select one is most difficult, but at the same time, once we've selected that one, it is quite an honor. And I'm going to ask Rachel Bratcher if she'll come up. Rachel works in the municipal councilor's office. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Rachel Bratcher has been a city employee for 12 years and 10 months, and is a legal receptionist in the municipal councilor's office. Whereas Rachel greets visitors and callers to the municipal councilor's office with a smile and helpful attitude, which goes a long way in dealing with conflict and diffusing stressful situations. Whereas Rachel maintains logs of docket items that come in and go out of the municipal councilor's office, staff attendance and in and out logs. Whereas Rachel is knowledgeable of the city organization policies and procedures, and is able to accurately and quickly provide information and respond to questions. Whereas Rachel willingly helps out when needed, including assisting with processing claims and collections, scanning documents, and providing clerical support. Whereas Rachel has handled thousands of calls and in-person visits, and she always treats each situation with tact and compassion, and a bit of humor when appropriate. Whereas this council desires to recognize Rachel for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Rachel Bratcher, Oklahoma, October 2014, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation again. And we want to, we want to thank the South Oklahoma City Quanis Club also for helping us to honor our employee of the month. And I'm sure there's some people you'd like to thank in the municipal councilor's office.
I do. I thank everybody, and the person that nominated me, and I love working for the City of Oklahoma City, and I love helping the citizens best I can, and I enjoy working here.
All right. Great. Thank you. Once more time, thank you. We will need a motion to pass the resolution on the employee of the month.
Move the items.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Also wanted to note, we have some students from Germany in our midst today in the back of the room. They are visiting here. There's about 20 of them from East and West Berlin. If you all would stand so we can recognize you. Thank you all for coming. They are guests of Class and School of Advanced Studies, and will be in our city for a little while. Thank you all for being here today. And we also have a changing of the guard on the vice mayor. Ed, thanks very much for the vice mayor duties that you performed the last six months, and Councilwoman Sayer will take over for the next six months. Let's see. So we're on item three now of the council agenda, and we'll have a series of appointments from item C through F. So how about a resolution on items C through F for those appointments?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item G is for my travel expenses to join Councilman McAtee and Councilman Pettis at the National League of Cities in November.
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And we're on to the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal, and item 4B is to approve the journal. Is there anyone, is there any comments or questions about the journal? All right. How about a motion? All right. We're voting on item 4A and B. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, several of the morning. Starting on page seven of the consent docket, items 7J, we ask that that be stricken. I'm going to reject some bids for some air helicopter parts, and we're going to strike the rejection because we're going to use part of that bid, so we'll bring that back as a different item later on. So we're going to strike 7J. And then moving on to page 22, under items for individual consideration, under item 9A8 on page 22, 9A8, PUD 1224, the applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the October 21st meeting. A protest, there are protests on the item.
Which one was that?
That's item 9A8 on page 22.
All right. It's been deferred?
Yes.
Okay.
And then moving to page 23, item 9A10, PUD 1542, the applicant has requested that this item be deferred until the October 21st meeting also. And then moving to page 29, under items 9I1, item F, 14508 South Robinson, we ask that that be stricken. The owner's removed. Moving on to 9J1, item D, 430 West Main, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured, I'm sorry, 430 West Main. Item G, 3610 Spring Lake Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 3718 Northwest 14th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M, 2765 Northwest 16th, we ask that that be stricken. That is now occupied. Item O, 2617 Northeast 19th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify on that one. And item P, 2051 Northwest 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right. We'll move on to item six. This is revocable permits. First is item 6A1. It's a request from Historic Film Row in the Film Exchange District to host the premiere on Film Row, and I think Julie's here to speak about it. Julie, we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Julie Oslin, 609 West Sheridan, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Yeah. Can you tell us about the event?
Yeah. It's a premiere on Film Row. We're the third, we're a family-friendly street festival, the third Friday of every month, and we go year round. We are kid-friendly. We do a lot. There's a lot of cultural art openings, and I've never seen any of you guys there. Meg, I have seen there. So you should come out. It's a, it's been a really good event for the city. It's grown steadily over the past year and a half that we've had it. Our attendance right now is at about 5,000. Sometimes we have the police department out or the fire department out with their trucks for the kids, and we have bounce houses. Next Friday, we will have a haunted house, so.
Okay. So it's the third Friday of every month.
Of every month.
The next one is October 17.
October 17.
And it's on Sheridan, west of downtown, if people are not familiar with Film Row.
Correct. We start at Dewey and go all the way to Chertelle.
All right. Well, thanks and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, Julie. I'd move approval.
We're voting on item 6A1. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 6A2 is a request from Hits Incorporated to host a running festival, October 11, at Remington Park at Martin Luther King Avenue and Remington Park Road. Is there anyone here representing this event? All right. Well, it's in Ward 7. John, you want to make the motion? Okay. Cast your votes on item 6A2. It passed unanimously. Item 6B is a request for a revocable permit from Celestial Cycles to hold a cyclocross race, and this will be out at Overholster Park. Is there anyone here representing this event? All right. James, you want to make a motion on this one?
Yeah, I'll move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then item 6B2 is a request for a revocable permit to hold a wedding reception in Alice Harne Park on 15th Street, and that's in Ward 6. Meg?
Congratulations to Stuart Hudson. I would move approval.
Thank you.
All right. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We'll recess the council meeting now. Convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to say, any comments or questions on the MFA? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Well, adjourn the OC-MFA convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Two items.
Move the items.
All right. Comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OCPPA convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items. Is there a second? All right. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC-EAT, and we convene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Are there any individual considerations on the consent docket?
Mayor, I do have a couple of things, if you don't mind. First being, item 7AW is an item to recommend negotiations of contract with our municipal lobbyist, and I'd like to pull that item, if you don't mind, and ask that we vote on that separately.
Okay.
And then I did want to mention 7AB1, 7BA, and 7BB.
All right. Why don't you go ahead and jump into AB1?
All righty. Let me see if I can get ahead of myself here.
Those are some drainage inlets.
Those are the drainage, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't find my note, but those are the drainage issues that we've been having, particularly over at Fourth and Walker and Fourth and Chertelle. And I just wanted to note here that what we're doing is accepting some additional inlets that were installed. They have helped the issue, but they haven't completely fixed the matter. And Eric and some of his staff, Debbie Miller, joined me for a meeting last week to meet with the neighbors and discuss the issue. We sent somebody out right away to look to see if adding some additional inlets might solve the problem, and I think it's a little bit more complex than that, but we are working additionally to try to provide some relief over in this area.
We are. We've had a couple of extraordinary rains, and it's hard to design for those, but if you've flooded during a rainfall, the property owners don't care. They want it to be addressed, so we're working toward that end.
Absolutely. Well, and so Eric, I wanted to thank you and your staff for being there that night. It's a tricky place, tricky issue, and I really appreciate it. The next item is 7BA, and these are some improvements in Bricktown. You may have wanted to talk about that, John, but providing some additional TIF dollars to do some, just routine maintenance. We've had, I think, a couple of discussions about this, but some paintings, some street replacements, some.
Fixing irrigation, repaying, doing some paver repairs, a lot of items that need to be done over there. The canal is now 15 years old.
Quick question on that item. When is the completion date?
Brett, can you answer that?
We anticipating going to bid at the latter part of this year and starting construction first part of 2015.
Thank you.
And kind of in that same light, 7BB is some work that's being done up in the Cottage District, and, you know, we've got so many neighborhoods springing up in and around downtown in the Cottage District is probably one of the most exciting, very interesting architecture and great projects, and most of the homes are using the alleys as ways to enter their driveway, their garages or their driveways. We are able to help assist to do some work in some of those alleyways, and this is an allocation to just increase a little bit so we can complete the work throughout the boundaries in the Cottage District. So thank you for making that available.
That's a unique area because we require an access in the back through the alleys to back garages and the alleys sit out at bay, and there really isn't adequate access back there. So we're filling in to make that really marketable properties, making them available to have access into the residential properties in that area.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right. Well, we were, we need a second on the consent docket, but why don't we, why don't we make the motion for everything except AW? And we'll vote on the bulk of the items. So we'll have the motion and second. We're voting on every item on the consent docket except for AW, so cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now, how about a motion on AW? All right. Cast your votes on AW of the consent docket, and it passes unanimously as well. On to the concurrence docket. Have a motion on the concurrence? All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a long series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 8. It's an ABC issue at 14110 North Pennsylvania Avenue. Is there anyone here representing this item on item 9A1? Hey, Dennis?
Mayor, Dennis Box and Keith Gibson. We're here on behalf of the applicant. This is going to be an ABC two, so it'll be 50% food sales, and we know of no protest.
All right. How about a motion then to pass 9A1? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 3. It's also an ABC issue at 2312 North MacArthur Boulevard. Larry?
Yes. Is the applicant present? Has anybody signed up? If you'd like to give just a very brief overview of what you're planning to do?
It's a restaurant, and we're just planning on serving low-point beer.
There are no objections to planning. Commission have passed, and nobody here. I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck with the restaurant.
Thank you. Hope to see you there.
Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 7. It's an AB3 issue at 1,000 Northwest 192nd Street. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? No one signed up. Is the applicant present? Can you briefly tell us?
Yeah. Dave Kennedy, on behalf of the applicant, address is 1601 Northwest Expressway. This is proposed to be a, kind of the new concept, Henry Hudson's, and it's going to be built in connection with a little adjoining shopping center.
This at Western and 192nd?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, applicant. The planning commission approved. I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck. All right. We're on to item 9A4, and this is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1500 Southwest 44th Street. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become an O1 limited office district. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here? And has anybody signed up to speak on this item? This was, is an item to allow the conversion of an existing home into an office on Southwest 44th Street. A majority of the homes along this area, as Pete and I are very familiar, have been converted into office spaces. This is consistent with the area, and with no protests, I would move approval.
Brett, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions here? Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes on item 9A4, it passed unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 208 Southeast 21st Street. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become an I1 light industrial district. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? Is the applicant present? Can you briefly describe this application, please?
I would like to build offices there for our company, since we own the property across the street also.
All right, the planning commission approved, I move for approval.
Second, could we add your name and address for the record?
My name is Tip Hale, address is 128 Southeast 21st.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from council? All right, cast your votes, it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, good luck. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 3. It's at 13320 Southwest 29th Street. It's currently an RA single-family, 1-acre rural residential district, and it would be moving to AA. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up on this? The planning commission voted unanimously to approve this, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A6. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 924 Southeast 44th Street. It's currently I1 light industrial and ABC3 club, and it would become an I1 light industrial district. Pete?
Is there any protesters signed up to speak? I move approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A7. Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 9A8 has been deferred. Do you have a new date for that one?
Two weeks, October 21st.
All right, October 21st. Item 9A9 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 19201 North Portland. It's currently R1 single-family residential and a PUD, and it would be a new PUD if approved. Is there anyone here representing this development? Yes, come on up. And we have visuals.
We do.
All right.
Yes, you need them.
Well, let's take a look at it.
For the record, Brian Coon with Hewitt Zollers, representing applicant. This property is just south of 192nd in Portland, about 80 acres. It's going to be, Track 2, which is on the southeast part of this, is going to be a new Mercy Hospital, and I have a rendering of what it will look like generally. There's one, there's a new one up at, on I-35, between 15th and 33rd in Edmund, and it'll be very similar in size. The architecture may change a little bit, but we've really locked that down in our PUD. We've had probably half a dozen meetings with the planning commissioners, Mr. Yocel and Mr. Gales, and spent a lot of time massaging the PUD, but that's the hospital. In Track 1, it's about, that's probably, I think, 59 acres, but what we've done on it is, we have set up some building types in that area so that you're not going to see, you know, 14 different architectural styles on that tract. Hopefully, you'll like what you see here. It's just, it's pretty much thematic, so that all the buildings have to look generally the same. Every project that comes into this development has to go through a specific plan, through planning commissions, or signage on the big tract. So, with that, I would answer any questions you may have.
Is this like a quarter section, or how big is this?
It's about 80 acres, about 82, 83. It's pretty much the east half of the northeast quarter, and then a small piece of the southeast quarter. You can see the piece that goes down to the south. That's the south end of the Mercy tract. Mercy, I think their tract is about 23 acres, so this total, I think the total thing is about 80 acres.
I know ODOT's working on expanding the capacity of the road out that way, they haven't reached 192nd.
The utility relocation is happening now.
Okay.
And they've done some work at the intersections to try to get ready for what's going to happen out there with construction. They're just, like I said, at the intersection, but utility relocation is happening now. We're hearing right now 2015, but of course, we're on Plan J or K, or we don't, you know, it changes a lot, but there, it's happening, so.
All right, how about a motion then on item 9A9? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Item 9A10 has been deferred for two weeks until 10/21. Item 9A11 is a zoning case in Ward 4. It's at 7217 South Choctaw Road. It's currently AA agricultural and C4 general commercial, and it would become a new PUD. Pete?
Are there any protesters, none? Is the applicant present?
I only have one question, and that is, have all the technical evaluations been met? I see some of them are, some are underlined and so forth, but have all the, have they all been met?
Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, on behalf of the applicant. Yes, the TEs have been agreed to.
Then I don't have a problem with it, I move approval. Thank you.
All right, we're voting on item 9A11. Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 9A12 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 11420 Northwest Expressway. It's currently a planned unit development and would be a new PUD if approved. James?
Is the applicant here? Can you just kind of explain what's going on?
And what is your name and address?
Michael Navard, 2209 Northwest 57th Street. We had this previously approved, and we just reallocated the same land use, just changed the, put more commercial up front and residential below.
Just kind of rearranged?
Just rearranged, yeah.
Okay, and have the TEs been agreed to?
They have.
I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A12. Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 9A13 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 2801 Southwest 30th Street. It's currently R2 medium-low density residential, and it would become a new SPOUD if approved. Meg?
Yes, good morning, Mayor. The applicant is here, represented by Bill Collins. Do you want to share with us, Bill, what the plan is?
Yes, ma'am. The zoning that fronts on 29th Street allows a car wash. This site is going to be the queuing line for the car wash, and we've restricted access, there's no access except from the car wash site. We provided site-proof screening, landscaping, and we've agreed with all technical evaluations, and as a matter of fact, those changes have been made already.
Great, well, I saw that the applicant, that you had agreed to those, and that the PUD document had already been amended, so there were no protests, I believe, and nobody signed up here today, Francis, to speak? I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A13. Cast your votes, passed unanimously.
If I may ask, could we get the emergency ordinance passed on this site? The site was cleared before the planning commission. It was a former mobile home park and ugly. So, the site's been cleared, and there is a siltation barrier up now, but it, like all of them, works somewhat, when we're ready to start construction. So, if we could, could we have the emergency ordinance passed, please?
You're ready to begin right away? All right, well, then I would move approval of the, ask for the emergency, please.
All right, we're voting on the emergency, it passes.
Thank you very much.
7-0. Item 9A14 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 2441 Northwest 1st Street. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. Meg?
Great, it looks like the applicant's here.
Ami Swank, on behalf of the applicant. We are seeking to have the two residential lots that immediately adjoin the, our current lot, which is a I2, and it's just to increase it into a warehouse area. It currently does auto glass, and it's a retail distribution. It won't increase any traffic. They're going to have it screened off from all the other residential areas. We've reached out to the, all the residential areas within that area. Any feedback that we have gotten has been positive. If you'll look up to where it indicates R2, which is directly across the street, that's a city-center duplex, and they are also supportive of it. If you have any questions, otherwise, I would ask for it to be passed.
Well, this is an area that is trending industrial to some extent. It's a very nice facility, and it's very well-maintained. Bob, there were a couple of TEs and...
We are in agreement with those.
In agree to. This is in conformance with the OKC plan, and there were no protesters, I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A14. Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. 9A15 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 16300 Muirfield Place. It's currently a planned unit development, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development if approved. Is the developer or applicant here? All right, are there any protests here? All right, how about a motion then on item 9A15?
No approval.
Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 9A16 is a zoning case at Ward 2 at 6820 North Classen Boulevard. It's currently a simplified planning and development district, and it would be a new SPOUD if approved. Ed?
This is to develop a childcare facility, has anybody signed up to speak? This had unanimous approval, no protests, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A16. Cast your votes, passed unanimously. 9A17 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 1031 Oakdale Drive. It's currently R4 general residential, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up on this? This is a challenging area, and going from R4 to allowing this particular business to go in is a positive move. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A17. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 9B has been deferred until October 21st. 9B deferred until October 21st. On to item 9C, and this is the final hearing on an animal welfare issue that council has been briefed on in past meetings. Is there any comments or questions here from council? All right, we're voting on item 9C. Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 9D is also before us for a final hearing. This is an item that Chief City introduced a few weeks ago. All right, comments or questions from council on 9D? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 9E is also up here for a final hearing, and this came to us from the Parks Department. Okay, we're voting on 9E. Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing. This has to do with abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here that hopes to speak today on the public hearing? Yes, come on up. Good morning, and we will need your name and address for the record.
Nels Peterson, 2520 West Wiltshire Boulevard. I'm the current president of the Oklahoma City Association of Realtors, and we'd like to cast our support for this ordinance, abandoned, dilapidated, and otherwise neglected properties are a burden on our community and neighborhoods, as well as our city and its infrastructure. This ordinance will allow the city to recover the millions of dollars it spends on fire and police calls to properties that are in this very category of neglected and insecure, by placing liens for those costs against the property so that they might be recovered from the very same absentee owners. We appreciate the city's continued effort to resolve this issue of blighted neighborhoods and communities, and we look upon this current ordinance as a very positive step forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Nels, for coming down. We appreciate you working with us on this. Mike Wofford?
Good morning, I'm Mike Wofford, 601 Northeast 16th Street in Lincoln Terrace. I'm on the Lincoln Terrace Neighborhood Association Board. We worked very hard with the city last year in support of the legislation. It ended up being less than we wanted, but at least something that the city believes it can work with. We support this ordinance. Our one concern is that the all-in costs of a fire call are, do not appear to be built into this, the capital costs do not. However, Assistant City Manager Johnson has convinced us that we should give this a try, and we appreciate her efforts very much, and so, Lincoln Terrace Neighborhood Association is very much in support of this, and we appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike, for coming down. Georgie Rasko?
Georgie Rasko, Executive Director of Neighborhood Alliance at 1236 Northwest 36th Street, and we also want to very wholeheartedly put our support in this. Vacant and abandoned buildings has been an issue that all cities across the country have been dealing with, some of them successfully, some of them not. What's difficult for most people to understand is that it involves federal laws, state laws, and municipal laws. It's not just at the hands of city council, and sometimes it's hard for neighborhood residents to understand why you don't just come tear down that ugly building at the end of their block. But all of them that we have talked to at Neighborhood Alliance are very supportive of this step. We realize, and we know that Assistant Manager Laura Johnson have told us that that's what this is. This is a good step towards a solution that we hope that we really can make even a stronger solution in the future. So, thank the council for continuing to understand this issue and know how impactful it is for everybody in this city and for doing something about it, so we totally support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Georgie.
Cliff Macbeth? Thank you, Your Honor. I, first of all, I'd like to know what this ordinance is going to be specifically. Do you have it written yet? Is it just to tear down houses or buildings if you feel like they need to be tore down, or what's the requirement?
Yeah, we do have the ordinance written, it is in the packet and available today. Bob, you want to cover the, what we're doing is, we have an existing property maintenance ordinance, and we're strengthening the fine provisions thereof, so we want people to maintain their properties and not be a blight on their neighbors.
Basically, the ordinance does three things. It sets up an escalating fine system for property maintenance violations. If you receive a ticket for not complying with a property maintenance violation...
Such as? Mowing your grass, painting your house?
Paint, yes. Well, it's not grass, it's paint, it's shingles on the roof, the gutter falling off, those types of things, to the structure, not the grass, not a fence. If you don't comply, you would get an initial citation. If you continue to fail to comply, the next citation would go from 100 to 250, and then a third could be up to 500. So, that's one of the things the ordinance does. The next piece, it repeals the vacant abandoned building ordinance that was approved earlier in the year, and then it sets up a process for abandoned properties.
Excuse me just a minute. It does away with the original one?
That's correct. There is an original vacant abandoned building ordinance, and this repeals that and creates the new ordinance. And then, the other step is it allows us to try to recover public safety costs for abandoned buildings. If the council declares a building abandoned, and we have a police or fire call, then we have the ability to assess that cost to the property owner. And those are really the three things that it does.
Okay, I kind of understand it, but I'm not sure I really do. But the original deal, I guess you're referring to the one that could fine you $285 plus $190 a month?
Right, that was...
For a vacant property.
Right, that was the registration fee for the vacant or abandoned, and that...
Now, as I understood that, I took the numbers that y'all published for the number of vacant buildings, and I calculated that out, and that had the potential for $30 million extra income from the city of Oklahoma City. I totally oppose this ordinance. I opposed that one. It's a money grab, just like the rest of your tax increases, and I think the city, and even you, Mr. Mayor, need to take a look at all of these increased regulations, increased fees. I bought seven houses last year. I sold two of them. Every house I bought was vacant. The five remaining houses are occupied today, but that's not fast enough for you, is it? You know, you want to, you want to, you want to tear them down?
Cliff, you're overreacting if you think that we're after people who are actively trying to engage...
$30 million is a pretty big number, Mr. Mayor, just for houses being vacant. Fortunately, somebody in the legislature saw the damage and the wrong that was doing and rescinded it for you. Now, you're rescinding it today, I guess.
Cliff, our motives are to protect neighborhoods, not to generate more revenue for the city.
Okay, you're going to protect neighborhoods? I had a house, they were stealing the copper wire out of, or a building, house and a building. I finally decided I'm going to have to get the police involved with this. I called the police captain, he came down, and we had a little talk, and he said, Cliff, I just want to be upfront with you, I probably know the people that are getting this wire. I can arrest them. I can take them... I can take them down and book them. The judge will turn them loose in the morning on an OR bond, and that'll be the end of it. They won't come back for trial? No, they won't. That'll be the end of it. Is that the protection you're talking about? I'm waiting.
Cliff, if you have an issue with the police department, that can be addressed on another time.
You're telling us that that's what this is for. You want to target vacant...
Absolutely, that's what it's for.
You want to target a specific group of people that are trying... Do you know how many thousands of houses the last 10 years have been remodeled and occupied?
Cliff, you're misleading people. That's not what this is about.
No, I'm not misleading people. Do you know how many thousands have been remodeled and reoccupied that were vacant 10 years ago? There's been a vast improvement in that.
All right, Cliff, you've had a chance to say what you meant to say. Thanks for coming down. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? Is it as a public hearing? All right, how about moving the public hearing forward then? Okay, we're voting on item 9F. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Francis tells us that an applicant on a previous zoning case is requesting the emergency. So let's look this one up. It's 9A17, and that was a zoning case in Ward 3. Larry, it's the one out on Oakdale.
Yes, this was double-noticed and was not requested on the documentation for the, what we're talking about here, emergency. I would like to move the emergency.
All right, we're voting for an emergency on item 9A17. Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Uh huh. All right, item 9G is an item that's being introduced to council today, and this comes to us from the Water Department.
Mr. Mayor, as Marsha comes up, I want to point out that these are our system, our water system development charges, increases today. Sometimes those are called impact fees, and we are having, going through an increase on impact fees on the water system, but it's not the only area we're doing this. We're also meeting with developers as we speak to come up with a plan to establish system development charges for parks and streets and maybe some other areas as we go forward. So this is part of the conversation, but there's a fuller conversation going on at this point in time. So with that, Marsha?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning to introduce the third ordinance that comes from the Water and Wastewater System Cost of Service Study recently completed. So Cost of Service Studies are a standardized approach used by all water and wastewater utilities to identify cost and service delivery as expenses for day-to-day operations as well as capital investments, and to create out of that assigned costs based on fairness and equity with its customers, whether they're residential, non-residential, those outside the city or wholesale customers, for example. I'm going to show you two graphics this morning. The first contrasts the proposed change. It's called OKC at the bottom of the page, and it's current, OKC 2015. Then you'll see 2016 and 2017. This contrasts the most common meter in the system. That's a water utility, that's a water meter that's called 5/8 or 3/4 inch size. 89% of all of our meters are this size, and that contrasts our proposal with existing fees in other communities. As you'll see, we fall in the middle of the pack roughly by the time we get to 2017. Also of interest to some customers, it's 2-inch meters. Those are services to a very large home with an extensive sprinkler system, would rarely use a 2-inch meter, but might, the, more commonly, this might be a 7-Eleven or a, any of the big box stores might be looking at this size meter just to make certain the sprinkler system works. And in this case, this shows you just the first year's change, because the only data we have is for one year worth of time. We, for a 2-inch meter, so up at $1,800, the maximum is about $2,600. You should know that the total fee at the, at 2017 is a little under $7,000 actually in our proposal. But again, this data comes only from this year. And finally, just some typical charges that would exist. Again, 89% of the meters are 5/8 by 3/4 inch. The sewer charge is not changing, just the wire charge. It works its way up every three years to $1,000. Sewer charge, on average, for a house is about $250 today. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, any questions for Marsha? This item just being introduced today. We are setting a public hearing for two weeks in October 21st. All right, thanks for coming in. How about a motion to move this forward? Okay, we're voting on item 9G. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9H is, has to do with...
Transportation network companies.
And the Uber and Lyft issue.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I can sage this a little bit. We've had several public meetings on this. We've had a public hearing about a month ago. If you recall, the last time we had this discussion, council came up with a number of amendments, and we actually had nine amendments that were brought forth to council about a month ago. We voted on those, and there were three of those that were passed on to the Traffic Commission. And to refresh your memory, one of it had to do with background checks and having increased background checks. One of them had to do with the deregulation of the taxi cab fees. And so those two were sent to the planning, or the Traffic Commission. They were adapted unanimously and have now been put back into the meat of the ordinance. That would be the second item here. The third item was the requirement of physicals for drivers. And it was a very close vote on council when we voted on it, and we, the council voted to not have the physicals. It went to the Traffic Commission, and on a 5 to 4 vote, the Traffic Commission said, yes, you should have physicals, so we're bringing her back here for a vote. So we've got an amendment, and that amendment is only, this is listed on your agenda, is only to vote about the physicals requirements. And then the second item is the ordinance as a whole. But to complicate matters a little bit more, we've learned that we have an issue regarding airport shuttles. And so Cindy Richards has another amendment she would like to offer off the floor in regarding to airport shuttles. We would like to go back and study and deal with that issue and bring back some recommendations on a later date on airport shuttles. Cindy?
Yes, we've heard about some impacts that the amendments regarding airport shuttles would have. That may have been unintended consequences. Assistant City Manager Barry has kind of been leading the way in those conversations. If council wants to not make those amendments that we proposed about airport shuttles, and instead wants to take the ordinance back to where it currently is about airport shuttles, then I have the language, it's about a paragraph long, and Jim, I think we probably have to wait until we get to that item on council before... Right.
That's correct.
Okay. So, why don't we go forward? Item 9H1 is an amendment that would strike the physical requirement for drivers of transportation networks. So why don't we...
If you're voting for the amendment, you're voting against having a physical. If you're voting for the amendment, you're voting against having a physical for the drivers.
Thank you, Cindy. That's, so we would be, by voting for this, we would strike the requirement from the ordinance that said you had to have a physical. All righty. Councilman McAteer, I think you had some questions?
I was one of those who was in, when we had the original, I was in favor of striking the need for a physical. I had the opportunity to listen to the discussion at the Traffic Commission. It was very good. It had a lot of information, and so I'm going on record of, I want the physicals to stay the way they are. If I understand it right, would be the same, if we vote for physicals, we could have the same thing for physicals for the drivers of Uber and Lyft and for taxis. Is that...
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
And could I have a clarification as to when the physicals are required and how often?
The physicals are required before they initially get their driver's permit, and then I believe they're every five years.
Okay.
Just a comment about, I mean, we heard during our discussion about the physical exam being done at the Brooks Clinic for $40 for taxis, and I'm just, I'm thinking that a physical exam every five years, there's no physician who's going to do what's required to sign off liability or otherwise. On a physical exam, we heard about one gentleman who's on opiates and taking pain medications. No physician is going to do what's required. Detailed history, checking the OB and DD report to make sure there's no abuse of opiates, doing, checking other medical, if they, if they're taking other medications, looking for cross reactions, getting other previous medical records, and charging $40. So that's not a physician who's doing that exam. That has to be just a mill of people just going through and people signing off. So I don't, I don't know that it's that serving the purpose that maybe we think it is. And so then, once you, once somebody made the appointment, waited long enough to get the, this appointment for whatever this was, then there, for five years, there's no, there's no monitoring. They could be on opiates or whatever medication, and we would never know it for the five years. So I'm having difficulty understanding the point of the initial physical exam, making all these drivers who are driving for Uber, Lyft, and taxis, and airport shuttles, spend these hours and hours that it may take for something that really adds no value in terms of public safety. Thanks.
Thank you. Pete, you had a comment, did you?
Cindy clarified, I should have turned my light off. She clarified it for me. However we vote, it's going to be the same for both of them. Is that right? I mean, on the...
Yes.
Are all these votes set up that way?
There are only two votes today.
I mean, I can ask it prospectively. You know, the regulation part, it ought to be the same for everybody, in my opinion. There's no difference between what they do. There is a difference between the airport shuttle, there's no, that's a different, we have different rules for them. But between Uber, Lyft, and Yellow Cab, there's not any difference. In my opinion, they all ought to have to follow the same rules. So I want to be sure that as I vote, whichever way I vote, they'll each have to follow the same rules. That's my concern.
Councilman White, I understand your concern, and I think I understand what you're asking. If you're, I will say to you that not everything within the entire ordinance is going to read the same way for taxis and TMVs and limos. As I've said before, we did the best we could from a legal perspective to try to consider where all of those groups are coming from in their business model and try to make it a level playing field. As far as the amendments today, the OSBI check is the same for everybody. The driver's physical would be the same for everybody.
The goal was to have an equal regulatory field on dissimilar products.
I don't think they are dissimilar.
That was hard to do.
I understand, but my view is they're not that dissimilar. They're both in the business of taking somebody that wants to go from point A to point B for money. Now, I don't know what's, I don't know what, why that's dissimilar. One of them, you order it differently, but they're both in the business of moving bodies from one place to another, willing bodies from one place to another for a fee. And I, and I just don't, I think the, I said this before, the cab business is a creature of the regulations that are existing. They, to demonize the cab business because you have this, that, all they've done is follow the regulations that we've created. Now, perhaps they lobbied for some of them for monopolistic reasons, but be that as it may, that creature is there, and that's a business that operates within it. You get another business that wants to do the same thing, but they don't want to follow any of the rules that we've, that we've, years, for years, we've laid those rules down. So my view is, we have to find a way to make it the playing field level. And if you continue with the comment that, or the position that they are different, then I want to, it's a difference without a distinction, in my opinion. I do not understand what is different about them, other than one of them you order it on the phone, and the other one, you have to pick up a telephone to do it.
Well, there are differences, and for example, the hailing provisions. You don't hail, that's not the business model for Uber and Lyft, is to hail the car on the street. That's what the taxi cabs do oftentimes. They're in taxi zones in front of hotels and such.
Why not let them do that? I mean, I don't understand, those are differences, there's a differences built up by the regulations. I mean, I don't want to argue with you, but, but I'm, yeah, I don't mind, but I mean, but, but I, but I just don't understand why we were going to such lengths to try to say they're different. They aren't different. They're not.
Part of the reason on hailing, the example that we used, was because it would be practically impossible for enforcement to determine that a TNV vehicle is participating in that hail, because they're cars like everybody else drives, and we don't require a paint scheme for, for instance, an Uber or Lyft car that we do for taxis. So we tried to look...
So we require the paint to enforce a hailing ordinance that wasn't in existence before? I mean, that doesn't make sense to me.
No, the paint, the paint scheme simply allows us to identify the taxi companies, the separate, different taxi companies. I think what she's trying to say is that with Uber and Lyft, you have citizens driving their personal regular vehicles that may be any color. We don't require them to paint...
We don't know that that's their personal regular vehicle. They could go rent a car and do the same thing.
No, sir, not by the regulations.
What?
Not by the regulations. The companies require them to use their personal vehicles for the, for the services that they provide, and those vehicles are recorded on the app.
That's, I don't see, couldn't Yellow Cab do the same thing?
As long as they were painted as they are by Yellow Cab, under their paint scheme, under the current ordinance.
One difference on the hailing, I think, is that the transaction is handled, you, you know who's picking you up and in what kind of car, and you have to agree or disagree before they ever come to you. And so you don't want hailing. Uber and Lyft doesn't want their drivers just stopping and picking up somebody they don't know. They want the whole review process. So the drivers get to review the riders, the riders get to see who the drivers are, they get to see if there's any complaints against them. The money is paid, so there's no financial transaction within the, within the Uber, Lyft vehicle. So I'm not going to, I mean, it's just, that part is different. It's just not part of the model to pick up people that you don't know, whereas taxis would do that.
There's just a lot of core measures that are the same, no matter the type of vehicle, but there are certain things that there was a little give and take. Taxis can't park at parking meters, but TMVs can't park in taxi zones. So a little trade-off in areas like that.
Can I ask a question? Because I'm not sure I understand that. One thing that was very close when we were oscillating back and forth on whether the permitting process should be done by the city or by the TNV companies, was that the TNV companies were not willing to share with us a list of their drivers.
Yes, sir, that is true. We contacted both, and they said that they would, they would share information with us only under exigent circumstances.
So, let me ask you a question, just because, why, can you help, help me understand why the city needs that list of drivers? I think I have an idea, but I just want to hear, what, what is the reason that the city needs that list of drivers?
Well, I guess first and foremost is that both of these companies reside outside of the state of Oklahoma.
Right.
Far outside, that we have no legal reach to them as a company. We do have reach, though, however, with the drivers. We can regulate the drivers here. If the drivers commit violations, we can cite them for it. But we cannot really do, the only thing that we can do for that company, if they choose to get a license, is to revoke that license. But outside of that, in terms of anything else, we really have no way of regulating that company except through the license provision. And so in terms of enforcement, if we have issues, then we have to go and... And so in terms of enforcement, if we have issues, then we have to go and do that enforcement with the local drivers, and it would be, if we need to communicate with the drivers, we really don't have a way to do that outside of the permitting process or the company sharing that information with us. The company said that they would not share that information with us. It was proprietary. They would not tell us who their drivers were. So the permitting process would then require the drivers to come to us and get a permit, and that way we know who the drivers are. Legally, the company is not sharing that information with us, and so it does not violate their rules.
So you would need, so if you pulled over a driver, they would be identified on the system as a TNV driver, and?
They would be identified through a permit. We will issue each driver a permit to operate, and so if they get pulled over, then they'll have to produce that permit to show that they are a permitted driver.
Do you think, at this point, we might be able to sort of, from a process standpoint, go back to this amendment? We're talking about lots of issues that are in the master ordinance, but I think before we get there, if we could go back to item H1, and, does anybody else have any comment on this ordinance, on this amendment?
And just for clarification, if we vote yes for this particular item, item H1, we're going to strike the requirement for a physical.
That is correct.
Okay.
So thank you for clarifying that. Does everybody understand? A yes vote strikes the requirement for a medical exam. So, would everybody please? Oh, may I have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Move approval of the motion.
Yes.
And there's a second? Would everybody please cast your votes? Do I have to do that? I'm sorry. All righty, one, two, three, four.
So it does not pass.
So it does not pass.
And so this was to strike the requirement, so the requirement still exists in the ordinance.
All righty, so then, let's move on to item 9H2, which is our ordinance being reintroduced to be adopted as amended, and we'll get to the emergency in just a second. But this ordinance, as the manager said, incorporates the amendments that were brought by this council, that were approved by the Traffic Commission, and it incorporates the vote essentially that we just took, and continues to require that as part of the permitting process, the drivers have a medical exam.
Okay. Yes, and before you do that, we do have the amendment on the airport shuttle language that we would like to propose to you to strike, that language, so that we can work with the airport shuttle and the rest of the industry to resolve that problem. So Cindy has the language that will need to be used in order to do that.
So if you choose to leave the ordinance as it currently is in the books today regarding airport shuttles, this is the language for a motion. A motion to strike four references of airport shuttle from the proposed ordinance, which are located with Article 1, Section 2, Sub 1, Article 1, Section 2, Sub 11, Article 1, Section 24B, and Article 3, Section 250, Sub 17.
I recommend it.
All righty, and so I just was distracted. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Larry, did you have some comments?
Cindy, if we strike this, then the process, the environment for airport shuttles in the future will be exactly the same as it is today.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So we have a motion and a second to approve the amendment?
Yes.
That will be incorporated?
Yes.
In this new ordinance?
In the proposed ordinance, yes.
All righty. Everybody ready? Would everybody please cast your votes? And that amendment passes unanimously. All righty. So now I think we're actually on to item 9H2. Assistant Manager Barry, do you have anything else you'd like to say about this?
No, ma'am. This is the proposed ordinance that would regulate the rideshare companies with the necessary amendments, and we're ready for you to proceed with it.
All righty. This item has been discussed and discussed an awful lot. I think, you know, we're all clear on what it does and doesn't do. So is there a motion that we approve this ordinance? Larry, do you have some comments first?
I have a question. As far as fares, if we vote the way it is right now, just give me a brief overview of what happens to the fares for the taxi companies and for the Uber, Lyft.
The taxi companies are still required, as Uber and Lyft are to, Uber and Lyft are required to place their fares on their application. Taxi companies are required to provide their fares to the city clerk's office, but the Traffic Commission is not required to approve their fares.
And can either one of those, if they so choose, put into their fares, if it's properly announced, surge pricing?
Yes, they can.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council, I'm not sure, Francis, what the steps are when you vote the emergency, but I just wanted to let you know that when we reintroduce this ordinance with all the amendments and set it for final hearing on the same date, charter requires that it be passed with an emergency. If the emergency fails, then it, we'll have to just set another date here in front of council. The emergency is required to be passed by seven of you, and I believe there are seven of you here today, so if it's not unanimous, then the emergency would fail. So I just wanted to let you know that. And we've also set an effective date for November the 1st.
Vote on the emergency is a separate vote from the vote on the ordinance.
So we'll vote first on the ordinance. Do you have any? And if all tracks, all right. So if the amendment, or if the ordinance passes, but the emergency does not, it will just take, it will just go into effect at a later date?
We'll have to bring it back for another hearing before council, but ultimately it'll go into effect at a later date.
Okay. Move for approval.
Second, I have a question before we vote. There are things in the ordinance that continue to be different. Is that correct?
There are some things, yes, councilman.
Is it fair to say this is a step toward making them more?
More consistent, absolutely.
Feel more level?
Absolutely.
Yes.
We just weren't able to achieve that on every step.
And we didn't achieve it because?
There are some inherent differences between the operations, although they are taking people from point A to point B, they're doing that through a different model.
I'm probably going to vote for it, very reluctantly, because the fact that they're using a different model, to me, is not enough justification for the dramatic difference in the way we treat them. I mean, everybody, the model that the cabs uses, I've said this before, having my middle name a bit of redundancy, I'm going to go ahead and try it again, but the model the cabs use is one that grew up around regulation. I mean, so to say that that's the way it ought to be, the model that Uber and Lyft want to use is they say, we can save money by not being regulated, by picking and choosing the things we like about regulation and picking and choosing those things we don't like.
Pete, you're not recognizing that the marketplace is going to begin to regulate these drivers themselves. It's a concept that we in government have a difficult time to grasp, that there are times when government intercession is not necessary, and this happens to be one of them. And I think we'll see continued development in technology create other situations like this. We can choose to say, we don't care about technology, we don't care about the marketplace, we still have a role of requiring certain things even when they're not necessary. Or we could say, you know what, technology has.
No, you misunderstand. I am not for regulation. I am for, I am opposed to regulating two businesses that do the same thing differently. Don't push me over there that I'm some kind of left-wing, crazy Democrat regulator, because that's not what this is about. This is not about regulation. It's about fairness. It's about fairness. And so when you don't, when you regulate one industry, one faction of the industry that does it differently, from an industry that does it somewhat, they're both doing the same thing, that'd be like saying, let's quit inspecting meat and see what happens.
But Pete?
I mean, you don't do them, treat them differently, and expect the market to fix it.
Because the cab system currently does not provide for the same evaluation of every driver after each ride, and upon that driver dropping to a certain point on that scale, they're kicked off the island. They can no longer drive.
But the regulations.
My view is, that's a gimmick. That is not, that's not real.
What do you mean, it's a gimmick? It's a requirement. To ride, you have to rate that driver.
I'd like to see the number of people they've kicked off.
David, can I ask you a question? Because I believe you voted for the physical exam regulation.
Yeah.
What are you hoping in the physical exam regulation, the intervention by the government, that the marketplace wouldn't solve through reviews? If somebody is clearly incapacitated?
Right.
Somebody's going to write a review, right? What are you hoping to add with that regulation that the marketplace wouldn't address?
No, that's a good point, Ed. I really questioned the need for that, but the one thing that led me to go ahead and vote for it, I think, not just for drivers, but the general public should always look to have a physical. I mean, I do one annually, no one's telling me to. So if this is going to encourage people to get some kind of medical attention that they would otherwise not, even though it's a small, little group, I'm in favor of it. I share your concern, especially if there's ways to achieve, to obtain a physical for as little as $40 or $50. They're not really getting a physical. Hopefully, they won't take that easy way out, that they'll truly see a reputable physician and get a physical. But I just think, if they're not going to otherwise, this may require a few more people to get a physical. I don't see it as a barrier, in my opinion.
What exactly is required? Can I just ask a question? What exactly is required?
That's what I was getting ready to say. Counsel, the regulations for these companies to obtain a license to operate within the city of Oklahoma City is the same. The regulations for the drivers to come in and be permitted are the same. The regulations for the drivers to have their vehicles inspected are the same. The regulations for the background checks on the drivers are the same. The regulations to check the sex offender registry, violent offender registry, all of that is the same, so.
We deregulated, we deregulated the rates for the taxi drivers, so we put that on the same level playing field, too. So although they're not totally equal, we're a lot more equal than we were before this ordinance was.
And that's why I'm going to vote for it, but I'm not satisfied that it is, it's like the line in Animal Farm that said that all pigs are created equal, but some are more equal than others. That's exactly where we are.
But tell me, in terms of the physical exam, what is required? What does the healthcare provider need to do?
I'm not sure that I can answer that, sir.
Does the applicant need to be disrobed and get into a gown, so that the body can be examined by the healthcare provider?
Councilman, I can't answer that question.
I believe it's a pretty broad standard, because we don't want to dip into what the physician believes should be done, but I think the standard is something about, that he's authorized to drive a vehicle for hire.
And transport other people.
And physically capable of doing that.
We're saying a physical exam, so I'm asking, A, I don't think it's physicians that are doing this necessarily, but B, what constitutes the physical exam? Are we listening to the heart?
Councilman, we don't have that level of detail in there. What I can say is, if it hasn't been done by physicians before, I can guarantee you that Sergeant Dancy will be looking for an MD at the end of the signature now, because it does require that a physician licensed in Oklahoma conduct the exam.
So physician's going to assume the liability if something happens? I'm just, I'm imagining with this, you're going to have, this can be very invasive, potentially. And it's, for a city with one of the most anemic public transportation systems in America, no public transportation in the evenings, no public transportation on Sundays, it seems like we would go the extra mile, deregulate, make it even playing field, but go the extra mile when you see something come into the marketplace that is helping you move people from point A to point B, when your public transportation system's so anemic? And so we want to add this extra regulation that we can't define, nobody here seems to know exactly what constitutes the physical exam, or what's required, or what the physician does or does not have to do. So for that reason, I'm going to vote against it.
We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak on this item, so before we take our vote, Joey Allen?
Thank you very much. Joey Allen, General Manager for King's Worldwide Transportation, 4801 Northwest 10th Street in Oklahoma City, 73127. I'm just going to say that I would encourage you to vote for what the Traffic Commission has brought before you. Twice, they've done their job. Twice, they've sent it to you, and we would very much appreciate a vote for the ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey, for coming down today. David Batson. Is David still here? I guess he's already left. And Wes Preble? Wes, I know you've been here before, but if you wouldn't mind, your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Wes Preble, 3405 Northwest 39th, Apartment 210. Well, one question, and I guess it'll be talked a little bit later. I don't understand why the emergency was added to this bill, and it hasn't been added all up to this point, but that can, I'm sure it'll be addressed in a little bit. Two concerns with the bill that I have, basically, it's enforcement. We have laws as they are now, and, I mean, I can take all of you guys downtown every day, and they're violated. Uber cabs are picking up hail calls, which they're not supposed to do. Taxi cabs are parked in illegal spots. Point being is, here we are going to add more legislation, and we don't enforce what we currently have. And in my opinion, and again, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if it would stand up in court, but if you've enforced the laws that you have now, Uber and Lyft wouldn't even be able to exist because of the current laws. Yet nobody has done anything to enforce the current laws. I mean, that's the biggest issue. And then I have an issue, a minor issue with the surge pricing. I think you're opening up a can of ordnance there. I mean, I think that you ought to have a maximum charge, and it ought to stay that way. So those are the three issues.
Wes, thank you for coming down, and I really think with regard to the enforcement, you know, Uber and Lyft are new to the market, as Wes said, it's a new alternative transportation opportunity, and our staff has been working since the day they entered the market to try to craft an ordinance that we have before us today, to try to create the framework that we need for them to operate in the city. So I think that's why we're here. Thank you very much for coming down. And the reason for the emergency is that technically, we had an amendment that we needed to vote on earlier, and so we can't, and this ordinance is being reintroduced today, so in order to do that without a further delay, we need to vote on the emergency.
Yes, and mayor, the effective date is November 1st.
Effective date would be November 1st, already. So, everybody?
One more question. Ed, may I throw that question back to you? What part of the physical requirement is problematic from your standpoint? You want, you want as many people coming into the system as possible. If you, if this really turns into where it has to require an MD signature, physicians have to take the liability. You're not, you're not getting my signature without me getting all the medical records and doing a lot of work. So you're unfortunately, unfortunately not, it's, sometimes it's not a very timely process in my office, and in many other physicians' offices. So people are going to go, and they're going to wait inordinate amounts of times, and they might have to come back, because it's very, very difficult. We can't share information, medical record systems, in a timely manner. People come, and I can't get MRIs, I can't get records from other physicians' offices, I can't get their list of medications, so they have to come back a second time, right? Then they have to wait again, then we have to sit down, we have to go over all that stuff. For me to say that they are physically capable of driving, I mean, I don't know what their medical history is, but if they've got a hip issue, I might have to examine their hip. I mean, it's going to be invasive. You're not going to just sit down in your clothes. You're not going to just sit down in your clothes and have a physical exam, right? You're going to get into a gown, you're going to, you're going to have your heart listened to, your lungs listened to, if there's something that, you know, maybe, it just-
Yeah, but that's all good. That's all good for that person.
Then let's mandate it for everyone. Everyone, all Oklahoma City citizens should have to have a physical exam. We don't do that.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I mean, there are lots of things that are good for people-
Yeah.
...that government doesn't regulate and make them do.
Yeah, I just don't anticipate these drivers will seek out physicians that would have as high of standards as you and how you've explained that. I'm just afraid the system is going to provide a way out of it to where it's not as demanding. Look at our workman's comp system, you know, I know they're trying to improve that, but there's stories all over about physicians, you know, saying whatever you want them to say. And you go back to when I was growing up and getting physical for athletic events, I mean, activities, there is really no physical performed, but that's the term that we used. I think the same thing's going to happen here, and it's, I don't see it being that restrictive or problematic, in my opinion.
Thank you, David. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve? And we have a second?
Yeah, and I'm, yes, I second it. I'm going to vote for it, not because I'm happy with it, because I'm happier with it than I would be had we not done it. I still believe that the regulations could be brought much more fair to all parties' concern. But I'm going to vote for it because I think it's a step in the right direction. I think to vote against it, or to vote against the emergency, would throw us back to right where we are right now, where we have this giant difference between the way they're regulated, and I think that would be a mistake to all parties. I'm not saying that this is an end-all, but I just step in the right direction, and perhaps we can look at it, see how it works out as it moves forward. So I'm going to vote for it, despite my comments, not being totally happy with it is not the same thing as not seeing this as a step in the right direction.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Everybody cast your votes. An item passes five to two. Oh, so now to the next technical piece, which is the emergency. Is there a motion for the emergency?
I move the emergency.
Can you explain to me what happens? I don't understand.
Nothing. Nothing happens. I mean, it's over. This didn't, it's not-
No, what happens?
Going to effect.
If the emergency clause passes, then it becomes, it's passed, finally passed today, and it becomes effective November 1st. If the emergency clause fails, then you have introduced the ordinance only, and it will be back in two weeks on October 21st for a final hearing, at which time, if it passes by five votes, gets at least five votes, it will finally pass and then be effective on 30 days after publication the next day, which would be November 22nd. So basically, if you don't pass the emergency, you just introduce it today, and it's back in two weeks. Correct.
Okay. So Pete, you made a motion for the emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Everybody cast your votes. And the emergency fails.
So we'll be back with the-
We'll be back in a few weeks.
Correct.
I think we're, now that we're through all this process, I think all of our work is going to be for not, because I just believe the state will come in and begin preparing their own regulations for these entities and will be excluded again.
That'd be great. We've got a nice model for them to follow.
You think they're interfacing? Never mind.
We're on item number nine I, one and two.
Move the items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody cast your votes. And those, Ed, did you intend to, that those items pass unanimously? Moving on to item nine J, one and two, this is a resolution declaring structures at 23 locations unsecured and authorizing the securing of the structures. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Cast your votes, please. And those items are passed unanimously. Item nine K, one and two, is a public hearing, and it's a resolution to adopt an amendment for the fiscal year 2014-15 budget for the airports enterprise cash fund, asset forfeiture fund, capital improvement projects fund, et cetera.
Doug Dollar came and gave an explanation of this a couple of weeks ago. This is, a lot of this is the year-end cleanup with the rollover and encumbrances and some fund balances that we're dealing with. Okay.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Yes, we do.
All right. Let's vote on item nine K. Item nine L is a public hearing. This has to do with a study on the physical conditions of our fire stations. This is in anticipation of a bond issue that's still a few years away, but an opportunity for us to go through and see what the physical conditions of our stations are sooner rather than later. This is a public hearing. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion then to move it forward? Is there a second?
A second.
Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item eight M is also a public hearing. This has to do with a resolution that is authorizing us to accept a grant award, and Chief City is here to speak about the item if anybody needs him to. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item as a public hearing? All right, sounds like we're good to go. Cast your votes on item nine N, and it passes unanimously. And item nine N is a resolution that's come to us from the Parks Committee, and Doug Cooper's here to explain what they've sent to the council.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Doug Cooper, Director of Parks and Recreation. Through the review of naming opportunities since my arrival in Oklahoma City, the current policy states that there'll be a 30-day public comment period, but most of our park commission meetings, on average, are every 28 days. So it actually takes two full months to bring a proposal forward to the city council, and we're trying to streamline that, and we've reworded it such that the name, the public will take that consideration until the next scheduled park commission meeting. Try to cut down on the length of time between the park commission hearing it and bringing it to the city council for naming. And then some other housekeeping activities that are a little, are just, we're just trying to clean up that activity.
Okay. How about a motion then on item nine N? All right, ready to vote? Cast your votes on nine N. That resolution is adopted. Item nine O is a resolution that would approve the emergency operations plan as revised. Frank Barnes is here in the room, if anybody has any questions. All right, looks like we're ready to go. Voting on item nine O, and it passes unanimously. Item nine P is a salary continuation. I understand we do not need executive session on this item. All right, we're voting on item nine P, and it passes unanimously. Item nine Q is a workers' compensation issue, and I understand we do not need executive session on this item.
Correct.
All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes on nine Q. Passed unanimously. Item nine R is another legal issue. We do not need executive session on this item.
Right.
All right, cast your votes on nine R, and it passes unanimously. On item nine S, though, I understand we do need executive session on this item.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion then to move nine S into executive session?
Would the item be in executive session?
All right, cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. Item nine T is an opportunity to enter into executive session, and the municipal counselor will join us in there, and this has to do with purchase of property. Okay. How about a motion to move item nine T into executive session?
Second.
All right, cast your votes, and item nine T moves to executive session. Item nine U, we do not need today, so how about a motion to strike?
Move strike.
All right, cast your votes, that item is struck from the agenda. Item nine V is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine V? All right, how about a motion then to deny the claims? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 10 A is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 10 A? All right, how about a second? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. James, you have anything for us today? Ed?
Two items. One, I just, I thought last night was a historic night. I thought Mayflower Church and ACLU did a wonderful job last night explaining the implications of the Supreme Court's action or inaction yesterday. I don't particularly like weddings, but I watched about 15 weddings, and it was very well done and just very, very exciting, and I think good for the city and the state. And just really thought about my kids, who I tried to talk about, and they really don't get it. They don't understand what the big deal is, right? This is our generation's, and I'm very grateful for that. And then I thought about my parents, who, just as I was born, Oklahoma was in a similar situation where we had, you had about 16, 17 states who had laws against interracial marriage, Oklahoma being one of them, about 74% of the American population against interracial marriage. Fortunately, I never got to see that, didn't get to see the separate bathrooms, and my parents were always very grateful that I didn't. So I'm very grateful that my kids, I think, will hopefully live in a very different world, and we took a big, big step forward yesterday. Second, second thing is, I want to just talk for a second about condemnation. I know we're going to talk about the Convention Center Hotel in a second, but I want to clarify some things with Kenny, because it has implications for that. And then also, I just want to ask for some help, maybe from the media and everyone, in terms of one particular issue. Kenny, we're going to, we're in the process, and we're going to continue the process with MAPS 3, where we condemn various parcels of property downtown when we disagree about the price with the owner. In the Cliff Notes version, and just stop me if I'm saying something that's wrong, the Cliff Notes version is that we get an appraisal of what we think the land is worth, and they may or may not get an appraisal. And the issue of the Convention Center, I understand they didn't get an appraisal. If you disagree with the price, then you take it to a judge, or in the case of the Convention Center land, three judges. Then the three judges come up with a price. At that point, we can still back out. Correct?
Yes, actually, it's three commissioners are appointed by a judge-
Okay, okay.
-and the commissioner's panel values the property and comes back with a commissioner's report. At the time the commissioner's report is filed, then the governmental entity condemning entity has the option to deposit that amount into court-
Right.
-the commissioner's award, at which time they take possession of the property. But the landowner can then, if they wish to file a demand for a jury trial on valuation, and then you have an additional trial on, or settlement on the-
Okay, so with this particular example, we've budgeted in MAPS 3 about 17 and 1/2 million dollars for site, for land acquisition and site prep. So we have an appraisal for what we think the Convention Center is worth. Let's say, I'm making these numbers up. Let's say we think it's worth 15 million. Then the commission comes back and says, "We think it's worth 20 million." Then we would have a choice, we could either pay 20 million, or we could walk away and look for another site. If we say, "Okay, we'll take the 20 million," then the owners of the property would then have the ability to go to a jury trial, where my understanding is about 99% of the time, the jury comes back with a number greater than that 20 million. At that point, once they, let's say the jury awarded 30 million, then we would pay 20 million out of MAPS 3 funds, and then the extra 10 million would be put on everyone's property tax rolls.
It goes on the, yes, the sinking fund as a judgment against the municipality, the additional amount.
So the amount that we're going to pay out of MAPS 3 funds is whatever the commission says it's worth if we accept it?
Correct.
Okay. So one thing that I'm asking city staff for, the media, everyone to really pay attention to is, what, how are these appraisals being done? Because it's not just going to be the Convention Center land that taxpayers are going to pay for with MAPS 3 funds and potentially our property tax rolls, but other MAPS 3, the park and river and many other things may or may not have to condemn property and go through this process. So the question is, what comps are being used in doing these appraisals, either from the city or from the people who own the land? I go back to the Videgra property, which we talked about in 2011, and we, and I warned that if that's used, it could artificially inflate the comps and the appraisals and these judges settlements, and could result in many, many millions of dollars in extra fees to the taxpayers. If, just, in that particular case, right, the Economic Development Trust took TIF funds from TIF II and TIF VIII, about 5 and 1/2 million dollars, loaned it to the Mary Gardens Foundation, who bought land on Hudson and Reno. The Economic Development Trust got an appraisal from Michael Stacey and Associates, said that the land is worth 1.57 million, and then 2.6 million was depreciated improvement costs. So said that the whole, it was worth 4.2 million, but the owner of the property said, "Well, wait a second," and got an appraisal using inflated Chesapeake deals in far northwest Oklahoma City where they were paying outlandish prices. So they said, "Well, we think it's worth 6.9 million." And the Economic Development Trust and Mary Gardens Foundation said, "Well, we're not going to give you a penny over what our appraisal says, but we'll let you give the rest of us in a donation, and you can take that off of your taxes, that'll be a tax-deductible donation," even though that's 20 times more than the Mary Gardens Foundation charitable contributions in a year. The problem is, if you go to the county assessor's site and you look at what the sales price for the Videgra property is, it says 6.9 million, right? There's no asterisk, there's no, that 2.8 million of this is a donation. On the county assessor's site, and for anybody who wants to use comps, they're seeing 6.9 million, that's like a 50% increase. So the implications of that for us, if you translated that comp to the, I don't know, is it 11 acres or some, the, I mean, it would cost us, for the Convention Center property, 65 million, 70 million? An enormous, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars. So I'm asking city staff, I'm asking the media, I'm asking everyone to figure out what comps are being used in these legal processes, and make sure that that one in particular, the Videgra property, never sees the light of day in any legal proceeding where the implications for the taxpayers could be ominous. But also, what other comps are being out there? What other deals are being used in comps that may not be so straightforward, that may have values far in excess of their appraised rate? And so, I'm getting confusing signals about whether that Videgra property is or is not being used. And so I'm asking for help.
We are not using it in our appraisal, and I will say that I don't think it's an apples-to-apples comparison, because there's a building on that side, and you're comparing that to vacant property.
Sure.
So I think that's a good reason to throw it out and not use it, because you've got a property there with a building that's occupied and such, and you're comparing that to a, not that the Fred Jones side is totally vacant, but it's 90-plus percent vacant.
So have we asked the county assessor to take off that price of 6.9 million?
We have not.
Why not?
I don't know that. We don't weigh in on property values, that's the county's role.
When we purchased 123 South Hudson, we did file a statement with the county assessor's office outlining to them how they should record the property in their system, and they chose not to file it. chose not to follow that.
Okay.
It's their system, you know, it's their policies or choice about how they record things on their website. And we did what we thought we should do to try to get the $4.2 million value recorded, and they did not choose to do what we asked them to.
Is there a process for appealing that or contesting that?
Not that I know of.
Could a owner of downtown land use that as a comp in any legal proceeding? Any argument to a commissioner that this is the sales price?
They could try, but I think the city's position is that we would argue against that vehemently, and we would have very good grounds to not use that as a comp. And we don't use it in any of our appraisals, and are certain that when we review appraisals that it isn't included as a comp.
But ultimately, it'd be up to the commissioners or a jury of citizens as to the final decision?
When you get, I already discussed this with Amanda, when you get to the jury, you will have a trial, and you can object to the evidence in advance and attempt to keep the evidence out, and you have a hearing before the judge, that that should be excluded as evidence at the trial. In regard to the commissioners, we can discuss that and see if there are any options related to asking the court to instruct the commissioners in a certain way, so...
So I guess, I guess what I don't know is how many other Videgraft property things are out there. And I'd be curious what owners of downtown land are using in their appraisals and as comps, and then subject those to strict, you know, research and to figure out, to make sure they're all legitimate. Thanks.
Larry? Okay. Pete? David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Next Monday, EMBARK, on behalf of COPTA and the City of Oklahoma City, will be the recipient of an award at the American Public Transportation Association, their national meeting. It's the ADH Wheel Award for their rolling out the new EMBARK system on their, on the buses here in Oklahoma City. And then they're also up for another award. And I just want to congratulate everyone involved with that, and looking forward to seeing whether or not they get the additional recognition that I'm hopeful for. It's a great system, and I think what the city has to do now is encourage people who do not have to use public transportation to give it a try and try to include it in your work week, at least possibly one day a week, even if it means driving partways to a stop in your part of the city, and then continuing on your trip using public transportation. Thank you.
Meg?
Well, just so many exciting things happening in Oklahoma City and Oklahoma, but I just thought I'd single out the events down on the river this weekend. Mike Knopf and his crew put on an amazing collegiate sports event, the head of the Oklahoma. We had teams from all over the country here, families visiting. I had the first opportunity to actually walk from downtown through the tunnel underneath over to the Boathouse District. It's amazing, spectacularly beautiful, so easy to do. Weather was great, and, I mean, there were queues for the zip line, kids running in the children's area. All the activities were full, food trucks had lines. It was a very wonderful weekend, and just one more great example of how Oklahoma City and Oklahoma are moving forward. Ward 7, by the way.
Nothing, John? All right, city manager reports.
This morning, we have a presentation on the Convention Center Hotel. Kathy O'Connor is here to kick that off.
Good morning. We'd like to provide you with an update of where we are and the status of the evaluation of whether or not we should proceed with the development of a Convention Center Hotel. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to kind of tell you what we're going to talk about today, and go through the agenda, give you a little bit of information about some of the meetings that we've had in the past, some background information. And then I'll be turning it over to Tom Morse with Public Financial Management to go through some of the information about preferred business models and other information about the development of the hotel. So to get started, our agenda today is to share with you the feedback that we received from stakeholders in May. We have some information about hotel projects from other cities, to go through our preferred business model, to kind of talk with you about the pro forma model and how it works and the variables that are associated with it, and then go through some recommendations and next steps. The last time we were here to talk about the Convention Center Hotel was in April, and we told you at that time that we would be interviewing a series of stakeholders about the hotel, trying to gather information about what their preferences were, what their desires were, and talk a little bit about things like funding sources if a public, if public financial assistance is needed for the project. So during May, we conducted a series of stakeholder meetings. All of you participated in those, and we really thank you for putting your time and attention into this project. We also met with members of the Convention Center Subcommittee, people from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, other downtown business people, organizations that are in the downtown, some of our major attractions, like the State Fairgrounds, the National Memorial, and we met with representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. We received feedback on a variety of topics, the overall need for the hotel and the financial viability of the project. Several people talked about the linkage of the hotel to the Convention Center and how they are complementary projects. We talked about possible city funding sources, which I mentioned earlier, and public versus private ownership, which I know is something that we talked the last time we were here in April, and was something that we talked mostly with council people about, because you are really the ones who will make that ultimate decision about whether or not the hotel is publicly or privately owned. Some of the key observations that we got from stakeholders was that the development of the hotel was an opportunity that we have to make sure that the Convention Center is as successful as it possibly can be. People also expressed a desire for the hotel to be something that's not in the market already, not in the downtown market. They wanted an upper upscale, full-service Convention Center Hotel that represents a major brand. So Omni, Westin, Marriott, Hyatt would all be brands that are not currently in the downtown market today. We heard a lot of concern about the Convention Center, the proposed MAPS 3 Convention Center, and that while it's sized for us to capture more conventions, there was concern about whether or not it's adequately sized for future growth and to really move us to the next level of convention business. There's still the need to resolve several issues that are associated with the development of the Convention Center and the Convention Center Hotel. And some of those that we heard about was, were things like meeting space, so that we can host multiple conventions or meetings at the same time. Parking, parking's going to be, parking's always an issue downtown and one of the things people ask me a lot about. So we will need to address parking and how it's going to be provided for both the Convention Center and the hotel. Land acquisition, I think Councilman Shadid brought up some of the issues that are related to land acquisition, but we are still in the process of acquiring the site for the Convention Center. And we will need to discuss, or it'll be a part of the final deal structure, about how the land for the hotel is provided. Is it a ground lease? Is it, you know, is it purchased by the hotel developer? All of those different things have an impact on the, on the final pro forma for the deal. And then, there was an interest in providing project-based financial support. In other words, there, we did not hear any interest in having an election for a hotel motel tax or any other kind of tax to support the Convention Center Hotel. That was pretty widespread among all the people that we talked to. So when we talk about project-based support, you know, what we'll be talking about is tax increment financing, how we address the parking can be a part of that, but things that we've done before and are similar to other projects that we've done in the past. One of the other things that we thought we would talk about this morning is some of our experience in the past, and that, you know, we've, we have participated in hotel development deals in the past. And the first one was with the Renaissance Hotel in 1999. It's 311 rooms, had about a $35 million development cost at the time. There's about $7.8 million in local and federal funds that are associated with that project, as well as it was built on land that was owned by the Urban Renewal Authority. An important part of that transaction was that the hotel received exclusive catering rights to the Convention Center and controls the booking for the meeting room space, so...
And still due to this day.
Pardon me?
And still due to this day.
And still due to this day, yes. That agreement has not expired yet, and that has had a significant financial benefit to the Renaissance Hotel. The next transaction that we worked on was the Skirvin Hotel. It opened in 2007. It's 225 rooms. The local and federal funds in that project were about $22 million. And again, it was, those funds were provided to that project through a variety of sources, similar to what we think would happen with the Convention Center Hotel. Tax increment financing, federal funds from a Section 108 loan, new markets tax credits, historic tax credits, a little bit of everything. 21C is the most recent project that we've worked on. It's scheduled to open in 2015. It will be 135 rooms, and we have local and federal funds in that project of about $12.2 million. These next few slides, I'm not going to go through in any detail. They're provided to you for your information. Some of you asked about this when we talked in the past. These are some hotel transactions that have happened throughout the country recently, and give you some ideas about how, how these are structured, what kinds of incentives are provided. And if there's a message from any of this, it's that it's very difficult to find an apples-to-apple comparison, because pretty much all of them are structured differently. One way to look at things is the gross public cost per room, and those numbers are indicated on some of these slides. But some of the things that we don't know, we don't have the specifics on some of these transactions, but they may have had more meeting room space, and that gets more expensive, or they may have had other demands on the developer that can change the amount of subsidy that's provided to these, to these deals. So we'll just flip through these pretty quick. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Morse. One of the things that we want to try to accomplish today is to get your okay with proceeding with the development of a request for proposals, so that we can begin to answer some of the questions that are yet unanswered about how the final transaction would be accomplished. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom, and he can talk about the rest.
Thank you, Kathy, and good morning, Mayor and Council. How are you today? It's nice to be back here in Oklahoma City. As Kathy indicated, so we've been working a couple of months here, that all your feedback was really important and helpful as we begin to frame the project and the feasibility going forward. Kathy wanted me to focus on the business model. We had a fair amount of discussion about this when we talked back in April about what involvement the city should have, and we really have three choices. We could, and that's looking around the country. We could certainly own the hotel. Some cities actually own their Convention Center Hotels and contract out management to a private company. We could do some sort of joint venture with the private sector, or we could let them own it and potentially fund it. And so, we don't have any conclusive recommendation at this point. We think that there's enough sense that we should keep all options available and go into the next step of the process and see what the willingness of the private sector is to move forward. We think that a privately-owned hotel seems to meet your objectives best at this point in time. It would allow for their capital investment and incentives for them to perform. So on the face of it, that would appear to be the case. Obviously, we need to measure that against the level of public support that we would ultimately provide. If we're going to provide a large amount of support, we don't want to give away all the ownership. We'd want to participate in the upside. So that's kind of the consideration at this point, and so we're kind of recommending that we go with both at this point. In terms of financial support, you know, based on all the benchmarks that Kathy, you know, we did review those with you and we went through them, I mean, it looks pretty clear that it's, there's likely support that's going to have to be made by the city and the hotel in order to get the project going. So I think it would be, as we move into this process, keeping that in mind is critical. You know, that level of support, though, I mean, that's obviously the question that's probably in your mind, well, how much? And I don't, we don't know the answer about how much today. How much will depend on what is built, on many of the factors that were put forth by Kathy. How do we deal with parking? How do we deal with land acquisition? Do we own it? Does somebody else own it? Those will have many impacts on the ultimate level of support. So we did run many cases. We'll talk to you here about a pro forma model that we built. We can come up with a scenario where there would be no public support at this point, but we don't know if that's realistic or not until we get to the next level in the RFQ process that Kathy just outlined. If we can go to the next slide, I just wanted to kind of, I mean, I'm going to do my best here to give you a quick overview of how we look at the finances here of the hotel. We think about it, when we think about public projects with the private sector, we try to help focus on the big categories that will impact the outcome of the project. And that we do is we build a pro forma model that looks into the future and says, under various assumptions, how do we think the hotel will operate, and how profitable do we think it would be? Or not profitable, as the case may be. If you look quickly on this slide, there's four boxes here of categories of either expenses or revenues that would impact that bottom line, whether there's profit or not. The first is the development cost. The development cost is the total project cost, what it costs to build the project. In the case of the hotel, that will be dependent upon the number of rooms, the cost per room, the amount of meeting space that's included in the hotel project versus how much meeting space is included in the Convention Center. Land cost, we talked about parking, it's not up here, but land cost, parking, who pays for parking, and any project contingencies. In terms of revenue, we project revenue based on the total number of room nights. That's a projection based on existing hotel room nights that are in this marketplace, and how that drives occupancy levels in the hotels. To give you an example, if we change our projection on hotel room nights by 2,200 room nights a year, you know, roughly four people per night difference, that changes occupancy rate by 1%. So these are variables that go into the calculations of figuring out what the feasibility of the hotel is and what the likely financial outcomes would be. On the operating cost side, we obviously have, how much does cost operate for the rooms and the food and beverages, food and beverage amounts, operating and maintenance costs and et cetera, taxes, insurance and others, as you might imagine. And finally, the other, the fourth box is the cost of capital. The cost of capital is how much does it cost to actually go borrow money or finance the project, and whether that project is done by the private sector, whether it's done by the public sector. There's a difference in the cost of capital that a private sector may expect a different kind of return on their investment than what you could effectively, potentially borrow money at. So those are all the factors that go into that, and we, you know, we have a model built. We're prepared now to, as we look at scenarios going forward, and we get proposals from developers, we will be able to feed those into this model and compare what the exposure might be for the city and what the results we could likely expect. Any questions on that? I know I kind of grazed over that, but I didn't, I want to try and give you a sense of, it's not a completely easy exercise, but we could run, as you can imagine, with these variables. I mean, there's probably almost 20 of them up here. We could change any one of them, and any one of them will change the outcome of a pro forma model. forma model.
About how many responses would you expect from the private sector on this?
I would, I would expect that we will probably get seven to 10. I mean, that's a guess at this point, but I think we could expect seven to 10. Now, that's qualified responses, you know, large name brand, you know, participants, big developers. The hotel companies may propose on their own, you know, get proposals directly from them. I think that could be pretty exciting for the city.
Okay.
So that's kind of the model. I mean, I really, I want to, I don't want to skip over anything if people have questions. I mean, it's, you know, you know, one thing about the model, I think we don't want to, you know, I think it's good for the private sector to know we have the tool and we can kind of take their numbers apart. I don't think it's good for us to tell them that we're prepared to support at X amount today. You know, I think we want to keep that to ourselves, that as we go into a procurement process, that we're able to negotiate from the strongest position as the city. Just a thought there.
All right.
You know, if we, if we throw out a bogey, I think people will shoot for a bogey. So that'll be our starting point. I'd hate to do that because I, I think the team can do better.
I think you, you watched the Haywood Sanders Town Hall meeting.
I did.
I appreciate it. One, one thing he pointed out there is that you, you can't assess the economic performance of the hotel without modeling in the performance of the convention center because both he and the Stone Report and CSL report are all saying that the convention center performance is to a large extent going to drive the hotel economics. And then one thing he pointed out was you don't yet have a breakdown of convention attendance. And I think we asked for that in April, right? The SMG data about, the Stone data just said, here's your convention attendees, it's 500,000. And so we asked to break it down by what's conventions, what's barons games, what's, have we, have we gotten that data from them yet?
I am not aware of that level of data, but we've actually gone further than that, I would say, because we're going to drive off a total number of actual room nights that exist today. Now, certainly your point, which I think, Councilman, is a good one, which is that as we project forward future room nights, that's certainly a consideration. If there's a larger convention center and we have more conventions, we have to add an increase in room nights based on that.
Right.
Our model is very capable of doing that. We're working off of existing today data on occupancy, hotel occupancy. Right now, I think this month, we're tracking at 77%. That's pretty high.
Right. So, but last time we were, last time we were together, we said we were going to look at convention center performance today. So that would go to your point of, you're looking at today. So I'm just saying, have we got that data?
I thought we provided that to you, Councilman. Let me check on that because I...
Maybe you did.
What's that?
Maybe you did.
That was my understanding on that. I'm checking on that right now.
Okay, thank you.
But, but that'll be data that, you know, I mean, we have to start at a baseline, you know, and the baseline has to be real and, because we're making a projection about something going forward. And so, you know, the way we built the model is we'll put in today's actual number of room nights. We have that data. City collects that data. So that'll be the starting point and that'll be a, not a refutable number, right? It'll be, it'll be the facts. And then we'll have to look at occupancy and, and, you know, if we're going to add additional capacity of 500 rooms or 600 or 700, whatever the number might be, we got to fill those.
But do you, do you have a sense today, how many people are attending conventions at the Cox Convention Center and spending the night today?
We did not do that work. So I, I, if that's in the SMG report or other report, I'd have to refer to that report because we didn't do that. We don't do that level of analysis here. We took all the factual data that we could find existing on current occupancy at the hotels, current rates, all of, all the factors that are up there, total number of room nights.
But do you have a thought about Haywood Sanders' contention that you must do, you must consider that data?
Well, I...
Critical...
If, if there's any starting data point, yes, we have every piece of data that exists regarding, if we, if so, for example, if we have a total, I think the total right now is 400 and some thousand in, in total room nights here in Oklahoma City in hotels. And if 100,000 are associated with conventions or, or whatever, yes, it would be very helpful to have that data because that'll, that'll inform our projection going forward. So I would welcome that kind of data as we go forward. And, you know, we'll, we'll be asking the private sector to have their projections of data and we'll be able to look at their projections and what they feel comfortable with. I mean, that's, that's kind of even more important is, you know, where, what is our baseline and what we feel is reality versus what someone is projecting to be their reality and what they want us to be on the look for? That's the, that's a more important question as we go forward that I will want to get us all focused on before, before you would make any decisions, certainly.
Because if we believe the projections of the, of the consultants, this would already be done. If people believe the convention sports and leisure study of 2009 that said you'll triple the number of attendees, private sector would have already come in and built a hotel. So presumably, they don't believe these studies that are coming up with projections. So I'm just looking for hard data and if, Jim, if that's been provided to us, fine, but we, I'd like it provided to them.
Okay. That would, that would be great, but, you know, nobody would be building the hotel yet because we don't have a convention center. So, I mean, we're trying, I think, I think one of the things that Kathy said that I really agree with and I think, you know, the mayor's direction on this project, we have an opportunity here to kind of take advantage of this. We're making a big public investment here in a convention center. We have an opportunity to see if we can leverage that. And I think this, that's why we're recommending, let's get into the market, let's see what that looks like. We're not asking for any decisions on spending money of the city here at this point, but you're going to get the bite at that apple and I think we've got the tool for you. Councilman, I appreciate all your comments because I think, you know, I've tried to build a tool here that makes sure that I can answer your questions in the future, so...
When, when should we expect responses? Remind me? Before the end of the year?
We would like to issue the, the RFP sometime this winter and get responses in the spring. So we could issue it as early as November, we could hopefully, or we could wait until January and give people a break over the holidays if we think that would impact the kinds of responses we would get.
Well, I think we want to increase the number of responses, but I'll leave that to your judgment as to the timetable.
Kathy, how much time do you think typically one would allow before they were asked to respond? Is that a three-month window or is it a...
I think at least 90 days. And if we go over the holidays, we might want to give them a little bit of extra time.
Okay.
Question, do you need council authorization to move forward with the RFQ or just the council?
No, we'll bring that back for council authorization.
Yeah. That's what we were planning to do.
Okay.
And, and again, on the procurement process, I think, you know, we've, we've done these a lot. You want to, you want to keep momentum and you want to keep people focused and, you know, so we can move it as quickly or as slowly as you want. I think the most important thing from the city's perspective is showing, you know, the willingness to move forward and to consider options. That'll encourage the private sector to respond.
I really think the most important thing for me is to keep as many options open as we possibly can and not eliminate any of those models until we get a chance to sit down and talk with folks and figure out, you know, what the numbers really do look like.
Yeah, the model's our tool.
Right.
Not, not their tool. So, so that's, these are great comments and we really appreciate it. The next slide here, quickly, we, we did, I think Kathy covered most of this, but, but we did talk about ways to, you know, I, I outlined the four boxes to you. You know, this is related to that. If we need to kind of increase revenue, one way to, or reduce expenses, one of the areas I looked at that I outlined on the tax line, or on the expense line is taxes. So if we abate taxes, for example, we take that out of the expense line of the hotel pro forma and that adds more revenue at the bottom. So those are the kinds of, I just trying to relate then the specific things that we might consider in the future and how they impact the pro forma going forward. On the other hand, if we, I talked about the development cost. If you look under reduced hotel development costs there, that would change the number in that box. So if we're, if we're taking the project from a 735-room hotel, that was what was outlined in Stone Report, to a 600-room hotel, I think that was even a little less than what was in the original CSL report. Right there, you're talking about a $27 million difference in that, in that box, in that cost. So if we take $27 million out of the cost, we obviously, it makes the bottom line a little easier to achieve. So those are the variables.
Well, except in that case, you're reducing revenue opportunity.
And we're, well, we're, and interestingly, going to another box, we're, we're reducing overall revenue, but we're increasing occupancy because we're dealing with the same amount of room nights, but with a smaller hotel. So, so the, good point, but I, that's why I wanted to illustrate that we have all these little variables going on here and we're trying to help you kind of come to the right optimal decision. We don't think we can do that by ourself. I don't have that crystal ball, but as we get the private sector proposals and we see experts in the hotel business making their proposals to us, that'll give us an opportunity to really get, I think, a much tighter box around what it is that we can expect. And that, again, I know I am like a broken record here, before you agree to it, okay? So...
All right. Well, thanks. Anything else?
Nope. I think that's...
So this item will come back in front of us for a vote at the next council meeting?
No, when we have the RFPs put together, I think.
We'll, we'll develop an RFP and bring it back to you for approval before we issue it, so...
But that, that's it? I mean, that, we just did a, a study on financing options. That's the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, we're saying, I, I, okay. Can you, can you outline with the, I mean, any, any more detail what cities are done or if you, if you don't want private ownership, what does that leave you with? What are the, what would be the parameters of this RFQ? Is it, are we, is it just private ownership or public ownership? All of it's on the table? Just basically, any, any option out there, any private developer just comes with us with their proposal?
I think that we, as we draft the document, we will draft the document and try and be very, have a lot of clarity around what the city's objectives are. And so, for example, to the point of one objective, for example, we would say the city seeks to minimize the public contribution. So here's, here's the opportunity. The opportunity is to build a hotel in, in connection with our convention center development. And here are our objectives in associated with that. We want to minimize the cost. We want to optimize the amenities for the citizens of Oklahoma City, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we will ask for proposals that will conform to those sets of objectives.
Okay. So let me ask you about specific ground lease, right? How, so we would use MAPS III funds to purchase the land that the hotel is going to sit on? And then, then what happens?
Tom doesn't know the answers to that.
Okay.
We don't know the answers to all of that yet. But what, what the, the plan is right now is that the, the hotel site is a part of the overall convention center site that is going through the condemnation process right now. And when we get a commissioner's award, we will use MAPS III money to make the deposit into the escrow fund. Once we know the, the structure of the transaction, whether or not there's parking underneath it, how all that's going to fit, MAPS III will be reimbursed for the footprint of the hotel or the parking garage or whatever is not MAPS III-related. So that really doesn't have anything to do necessarily with how we provide the land to the hotel. That's how we deal with the purchase price and the, and the ownership of that piece of land.
Okay. So who, who made that decision? I mean, what, you're saying this is the plan. Where, where is this, who made that decision that MAPS III funds would be used and then they'd be reimbursed with...
I think the plan from all along was not to use MAPS III funds for the hotel site and we're trying to achieve that.
Well, I've heard conflicting, I've heard that they might be used to buy the land as recently as last week, that it would be used to buy the land.
I think what I told you, what it was, it was never our intention to use MAPS III funds to ultimately buy, you know, the ownership of the hotel site. To simplify the condemnation process, we might, we, we, the plan was to use MAPS III funds to make the deposit for the, the escrow fund. And that's, I mean, that's the direction that...
As not to complicate, as not to complicate the, the grander site acquirement.
Okay. So that's going to happen here presumably pretty soon. So the plan is MAPS III funds will be used to, for the deposit, to buy the land that the hotel is going to go on? And then we'll figure out later who's going to pay them back?
Right.
If anyone?
No.
Turn attention to...
Somebody will.
Okay.
And so the final transaction may require a ground lease, but the land, the dirt, might be owned by COTBA. It might be owned by the Urban Renewal Authority. It might be owned by...
By the city.
By the city. I, I don't know the answer to that yet. Those are all things that we'll work out during this process with, you know, as we move forward with the acquisition of the property and the hotel transaction.
I just want to ask you a philosophical question. You said during, at the beginning, that there was no support for an election, right? Which is, that may be the majority, but it's not true that there's no support because there certainly is support for bringing these types of things to a vote of the people. But just as philosophically, just a theoretical case, let's say that you, you do your RFQ and you get your results back and I'm going to, I'm going to use just a preposterous number. Let's say that it requires a public, requires public ownership and a subsidy of $250 million.
Okay.
And then we have our meetings where we circumvent the Open Meetings Act by meeting in groups of four. You meet with groups of four and it's clear that you have...
We don't violate the Open Meeting Act.
Okay. We circumvent.
We don't make notices.
I didn't say we violate. I said we circumvent. It's clear that you have five or six votes or you have a majority, right? Maybe it's 5-4, maybe it's 6-3, but you have a majority that's willing to spend 250 million dollars in public ownership of a hotel. Is there a moral issue or is there a, is there a point, let's say it's 300 million, let's say it's 400 million, is there a threshold at which that should be brought to a vote of the people in your mind? Is there any, any number, if you have five or six votes on the council and you can proceed legally, is there any number where we should take that to a vote of the people?
It doesn't matter what my philosophical opinion about that is. That's a policy decision to be made by the city council and I, I really don't have any opinion about it at all. If you, if a majority of the council voted to take something like that to an election, we would help make that happen.
Okay. So you have no, you have no opinion?
No, don't.
No? Okay.
And just to be clear, the Open Meeting Act doesn't apply unless a majority of the council members are together at the same time.
That's why we meet in groups of four.
Correct.
Right. You, I think the ship has sailed, but I just, I, this presentation is so lacking in detail. I'm not, how much did we pay for this study of financing options?
I'm not sure exactly, but...
It's part of the overall contract that we have with PFM. I can't even...
We're happy to share any detail. I, you know, at this point in time, I mean, we could run a million scenarios. We built a model, which was the scope of the work to do, is to build a model to make sure that we can understand the different variables associated with the project. I think we're there. I think we have a very good, clear understanding of that. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Do you, one thing I would like to put to bed today, right? In the paper this Sunday is taxpayers could know within months whether a public subsidy will be needed to build a hotel, hotel adjacent to a MAPS III convention center. We are still using language, I think today you said, very likely. Do you feel that it's, that it is possible? I think you, you showed what other, what other cities have done. I think you had the Fort Worth, which was 30 million, but all the rest looked like they were more than 100 million. Is it, can, can we speed this up by a few months? Do you, should the taxpayers count on the possibility of no subsidy? Ed, how does that help our negotiation with the...
Ed, how does that help our negotiation with a potential private sector investor if we concede a concession today?
Everybody knows that. They all know that. They've, they've extracted concessions.
But there's going to be a negotiation process in all this. Why would we concede that? I mean, I don't understand from a business sense and in the best interest of the taxpayers, why we would concede that today. What difference does it make?
It makes a difference to the taxpayers, it makes a difference to the, I mean, it's, it's farcical that we wouldn't pay one.
All we're doing now is putting out an RFQ to.
We're not conceding anything. We're only letting go of a fairy tale.
We're putting out a request for proposals to see what we get. That's all we're doing today.
Okay.
We're actually not even doing that. We're giving them the, they're the authority. We're asking staff to put together a proposal, an RFQ that we can approve.
Right. So, so it's, okay.
All right, we're on city manager reports and the sales and use tax collections.
The sales and use tax collections, it's, it's really pretty good overall. Obviously, the month was down a little bit, but we're, you know, within a percent, three months into the, into the fiscal year. Economy is, has, has slowed down a little bit as we go forward. We're going to monitor it very close, but it's, it's, you know, here, within a percent, three months in. We thought the growth would be heavier the first three months until we projected heavier growth and we're just a little bit under achieving that. So I, again, we need to continue to watch it, but it's, it's, it's not a bad situation at this point.
It didn't, it doesn't seem to be apples to apples because a year ago, we were dealing with a lot of storm damage from the May tornadoes and Moore and Oklahoma City both have a hard time of matching year-to-year data because of the, the increase that was, that was made in building materials. But it just seems like we never get apples-to-apples comparisons year-to-year. It's like there's always some reason. It doesn't quite provide a fair comparison and, and this is one of those times, but.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, but, but it seemed like some of the other cities did trend up. Midwest City, though, was down. It just seems like there's inconsistencies going on when you look at Tulsa and you look at, at what our suburban areas are looking at. So I, I think the, I didn't, I didn't receive much credible evidence, one way or the other, from this sales tax check of how we're doing.
I think that's fair.
You could, I could make an argument either way and I wouldn't feel good about either argument. All right.
But projections, we, we were a little more aggressive on projections for the first three months and we're within a 1 percent of that.
Yeah. I guess the fact that we grew year-to-year, even with the, the storm, building materials, storm-related building materials a year ago is a good sign. If we, if we, because we obviously didn't have, we had a storm-free spring this year.
And for the three months, we're 2.6 percent over last year, even with that high storm factor from last year.
Right. Okay. Anything else in city manager reports? All right.
We have to answer any questions.
Citizens to be heard, Joe Sarge Nelson.
I'm Joe Sarge Nelson. I've been here before. I want to make a comment on what y'all were just talking about right now. Now, I have done a little studying on that since being a taxpayer and all. We have several hotels down, breakdown right now. They never have been to 50 percent capacity. We got Cox Convention Center. Why overburden and overboard the people? It's a waste of time, a waste of energy and a waste of money. I had a nice speech that I was going to give you all. I did go through protocol. I wrote to Mr. Couch about it. And my speech was about five to seven minutes and I got a quick answer back saying limited to three minutes or less or shut up, so to speak. Well, that's fine. Before I get into this, I need to ask Mr. Couch, what you use in my photographs about the pillars? I know, file 13, nothing out of the ordinary. The gentleman to your left or to your right, Mr. Jordan, this has nothing against you personally. And oh, three, I went up against you with several other people. One of them was William Burkett. He wrote me a nice letter. We took him out of office too, $90,000 right along with it. He asked me to retract what I said. I was pretty strongly worded. This is the envelope he sent to me. I guess the job got too big for him and he kindly stepped down and resigned. And I've known Bill a lot of years. He was former U.S. Attorney. Now, back to what I came here for besides that. As you all are aware, I did present you people with some documents, affidavits and resignations and this and that and what have you. Didn't get a reply, didn't expect to. But I thought what was really funny about it, that the surprise was on me. I'm now known as a psycho or a nutso, according to some of the news people, and not a word was said about those things I filed with you. At least they were worthy to even be remarked that they were filed. My biggest problem is, to show you how far some of your people's reach up there in that horseshoe really goes, not having a word said about those documents. Now, I admit they were poorly written and weren't in context, but everything in it was legitimate and real and I can support it. I've told you before, don't play me for a fool. I'm not one. My biggest problem is what I'd like to say and then some of the things I heard on Fox News, Channel 44, about what happened down in Moore, they contacted the city people, according to our news department, and said that you all said that you were unsure about us being number two or three insecure in the community. I don't know what it's going to take to make you people wake up. We're in a danger zone. Even our own President of the United States is a fool. And I wrote him three letters and told him exactly that. I've been on the battle front before. I'm one of the taxpayers that represents you people. You can make mistakes like anybody else. But I'm going to tell you right now, if that wasn't a wake-up call in down in Moore, you better get some more police and fire department in here. I'm a strong supporter of having security. You want Oklahoma City to grow? Give the people a safe place to live. Give them a little security and Oklahoma City will grow right along with it. But right now, you all are making a bunch of foolish mistakes and I don't intend to back off on battleground. I intend to get worse. And when I get worse, you'll start to sweat.
Thanks for coming in, Joe. We have executive session and then we'll be back and have a finance committee meeting.